I'd like to apologize for the way I acted last meeting as a board member and the comment that was made. I think a lot of things were said, and I apologize for that, put on record.
Very good. I appreciate the comment. It takes a big person to step up and say they made a mistake, but what I would also like to add to that, since you brought it up, is all of us as board members need to remember that we are held to a higher degree of accountability when we sit at the table and listen to petitioners or townspeople come before us, so let's make sure we all act accordingly. And I would like to ask the general public, I know this is being recorded and will be on late cam, so as these meetings go forward, discussions for this 40B or any other 40B projects, I hope that everyone would act in a well-behaved and mannered way as possible. Obviously, there's people who don't like certain things that are happening, or certain laws that are in place, or certain things the town has to take, to deal with, but it doesn't do anybody any good to be yelling out the force at each other or acting inappropriately. So I just ask that everyone act proper decorum, and let's be as civil as we can towards each other, so. Enough said about that. So back to the continuance for Simmons Hills LLC. After some conversation with the petitioner, we received a letter that I would like to read into the record dated this morning, April 25th, regarding Rocky Woods Comprehensive Permit. Dear Chairman Oliveri, I am writing as attorney for Simmons Hill LLC and Mohammed Atani, the applicant, in the application for comprehensive permit for the Rocky Woods 40B project located off of Freetown Street in Lakeville. As you are aware, the scheduled first hearing for the project on March 21st, 2024 was unable to be held because of occupancy issues at the 115. The hearing was rescheduled for tonight, April 25th, 2024, but with the understanding that this meeting, that at this meeting, the only action that will be taken will be to reschedule the hearing for a date certain May at the Ponewood High School. So the next meeting will be at Ponewood High School in the auditorium. We were unable to establish the date and time in March 21st because we weren't able to confirm that, which we have at this point, and he writes his understudy, the rescheduled date will be May 16th. As attorney for the applicant, I am authorized to consent to the rescheduling of the public meeting until May 16th. Another very important part of this letter, which I know a lot of people are concerned with, and I reassured as many people as I could that we would work this out. In addition, as you are also aware, by statute, the Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals has 180 days to act on the comprehensive permit application. Because the scheduled first hearing for the project on March 21st, 2024 was unable to be held because of the occupancy issues, and because the first meeting where testimony will be taken will be at your meeting on May 16th, 2024, once again, as attorney for the applicant, I am authorized to agree that the 180-day time period will not commence until the rescheduled meeting on March, May 16th, 2024. So for the record, the meeting will be May 16th. We will actually start taking testimony and really getting into the meat of the process, and the 180 days will start from that point. So the town will not lose any of the days, not one single one, on the 180, and it's my expectation that we need additional time, that the applicant will most likely grant us additional time in order for us to get the best possible project we can for the town. Okay, on to the... Well, since we're on this one, I may as well take care of this at the same time, and I'm going to ask council to chime in for a second. One of the things that we do need to do for this process of 40B is we do have, the town has peer review consultant that acts on behalf of the town, that checks and double-checks everything that comes in as far as anything the applicant is doing to make sure that they are abiding by all of the rules and regulations and guidelines that they're supposed to. So we are passing out copies of Beals and Thomas, who is one of our, this board has voted on in the past, approved, peer review engineering firms. Council has signed off that they are more than capable of handling the peer review. So in order to get ahead of this, to be prepared, we'd like to engage with them immediately so that they can start their process and be ready off the bat. And Amy, if you don't mind maybe commenting on, I know people are asking about traffic studies and other things, what it is in general that we will be asking the petitioner to look at and what the peer review firm will be reviewing?
Sure. So the peer review, thank you, Amy Questle, Town Council. The peer review, Beals and Thomas will be reviewing the application as it was submitted, and then they will comment on what's missing, what needs to be submitted. In general, a peer review, and what I fully expect is going to happen here, the peer review is going to be traffic, civil engineering, stormwater, and wetlands. And so all of those will encompass the entire project.
Okay. Any questions for Amy? Again, we're not getting into the details of talking about the project specifically. All we're doing is trying to get this ahead of schedule so that we can get as much information we can for the general public to be able to have as much information as possible. What's the expected delivery of this peer review study?
So the peer review, once the peer review is approved by this board, and once the funds are deposited into the 53G account, the minute the funds are deposited, Beals and Thomas can start. So they're not going to be able to start, you know, until those funds are deposited. So they obviously will not have any deliverables to us on May 16th, but the purpose of the May 16th hearing is to get the overview from the applicant that we weren't able to get at the last meeting. So it would be, most likely would be your June meeting that you would first see something from the peer review.
So it's three to four weeks for authorization to proceed?
Yeah.
Okay. So what is that expected to, money is expected to hit the 53G account?
With this applicant, I would assume it would be this week or next week. Once this is voted, if this is voted tonight, if you guys approve this tonight, then...
Yeah, I believe he's already had to fund one through Concom, and he does it right away. He usually looks into the information when he leaves the meeting, so we're going to get in touch with him and let him know to fund it immediately.
It's to his benefit to fund it because they can't start until it's funded.
Right. I just think a lot of people are expecting this peer review study completed, and so I want to know the timeline.
And...
So what do you expect that?
Don't forget, the first round of the peer review will be also identifying what information is missing, too. So it's a, it's a, it is a process.
Okay, yeah, it's a fluid process. I mean, they're going to ask for stuff, they're going to get stuff, they're going to ask for more stuff, they're going to get stuff, so. But I think Jerry's point, which is well taken, is the first time we're going to hear anything from them isn't going to be any sooner than June, which is the first meeting after we get all the information and actually really start talking about it, so. Okay, if no one's opposed, then I don't think we need a formal vote, Beals and Thomas, we can just...
It's who we've already selected.
Okay. All right, that ends that. Now back to the regular agenda. So we have the Benati continuing.
You didn't make a motion to continue?
Yeah, it's because they... Oh, that's right, we do need to do that, don't we? So we have a letter agreeing to continue to May 16th at Ponewood High School. I will entertain a motion to continue the meeting until then.
I'll make said motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion to approve.
Okay, any further discussion? Actually, Anthony, yes, you are making, yes, and is anyone recusing themselves?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries to continue the meeting until May 16th. Now on to the Benati hearing continuance. Mr. Benati has sent us an email on Monday. I am not ready for the meeting and would like to continue, please. Thank you, John. So Mr. Benati would like to continue again. Do we have a motion to continue this hearing as well?
I'd like to make a motion to continue.
I second him.
Further discussion? All in favor of continuing the meeting to May 16th?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. The Mason Hearing. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, April 26th, 2024, 7:00 p.m. in the Lakeville Public Library, 4th Precinct Street, upon the petition of Carl Mason, President. A special permit is requested under Section 270-7.4B in Section 270-7.4B 21 for the demolition of an existing two-bedroom dwelling and the construction of a new two-bedroom dwelling of similar scale that would be within the setbacks. The applicant is also requesting to construct an exterior deck that will be attached to the second floor of the primary structure within the rear setback on a pre-existing non-conforming wall as provided by the Lakeville Board bylaws. Property site is 217 County Street. All assorted documents were available for viewing at the planning department. So I am assuming one of you is Mr. Mason?
Correct. Nick Filoso, representative.
Okay, Nick Filoso representing Mr. Mason. So why don't you tell us what you're doing, and then we'll read some comments and go from there.
Nick Filoso, representative and member of the Eagles. Paul Murray.
Paul Murray, trustee of the Eagles.
So for those of you who aren't familiar with the Eagles, the Eagles is a nonprofit organization and a members-only club. They donate to various organizations, especially in Lakeville. We have a scholarship fund, a Ponewood Scholarship Fund. They give money to Lakeville PG during the holidays for seniors from St. Jude's Hospital and the Long Pond Association. So we're here tonight seeking a special permit for the demolition and construction of a two-bedroom dwelling and the addition of a second-floor deck off the current function hall. Right now, the existing dwelling, which is a two-bedroom dwelling, sits three and a half feet from the property line. We are planning, or we're proposing, to move that to seven and a half feet. The what, the rear setback would remain the same, which is 22 feet. And I know there is a letter we received from the Board of Health. I have spoken to the agent. We do have to go back in front of them once more to discuss the septic options. So the other portion of this project is to install a deck on the second floor. The deck would overlook the side of the property, which is more than 40 feet from the sidelines, and we'd only approach into the rear setback, I'm sorry, 10.8 feet, I believe it is, from the rear setback, which is Long Pond. There's a current retaining wall there. And I think, I believe that covers what we are planning to do. Hold on to anything else? And I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, let me read a couple of memos into the record. As the petitioner has just referenced, the Board of Health sent us a memo on April 9th regarding 217 County Street. Board of Health has received a petition for hearing for 217 County Street, planning, the plan to accompany a ZDA petition dated 1/23/24 shows a proposed two-bedroom dwelling and relocation of existing two-bedroom dwelling. The Board of Health would like to know where the existing septic system is and where the proposed septic system will be installed before we can comment on the site. So you've already referenced that you need to work that out. We also have a memo from the Planning Board dated April 19th regarding 217 County Street. At their Thursday, April 11th, 2024 meeting, Planning Board reviewed the above-referenced petition for hearing for the Board of Appeals. Planning Board voted to send a memo to the zoning board advising they had concerns with the proposed dwelling's proximity to the Long Pond shoreline. Okay, nothing specific, just proximity. We also have a email from Conservation Commission, County Street. The project will require a notice of intent due to the buffer zone and proximity to the pond, and I believe we, that's all we have. Correct, Kathy? I'm missing anything else.
Are we able to receive a copy of the Planning Board letter? I don't believe we received that one.
Actually, I have one here, you can take this one. There's not much there.
Thank you.
Okay, so petitioner's told us what they're looking to do. We have copies of plans here. We already know that the Board of Health needs to be satisfied. What other questions do we have at this point?
It's only changing the rear setback, the addition of the deck?
That's correct, yes. The house would not be changing the setback. Currently, it's 22 feet, and we're proposing to keep it at 22 feet. Just shift it further away from the property line is essentially making it less non-conforming. I know it's still non-conforming, but...
But that's a good thing.
Yes, we're trying.
Less non-conforming is better than more non-conforming, and that's our goal here.
This will replace the dwelling that's existing, correct?
That's correct.
I thought about it the other day, it would be a nice addition to the property, for sure, look a lot better.
Yes, there is an existing dwelling that's dilapidated. The asbestos has been removed from it, so we're looking to demolish that structure and build a brand-new.
I guess I'm confused by the purpose of this house, why you need a house there on the lot.
The main purpose, the goal of the Eagles would be to rent to members of the Eagles. It would first be rented, long-term rental, to members of the Eagles. It would not be, the plan is not to have an Airbnb there. It's more just another benefit for the members, especially elderly.
So this is specifically, its purpose is specifically for residents to be rented to your members?
That's correct.
Is it available to the public?
Right now, the plan would be to rent to a member of the Eagles if there was no option or no one came forward for that, who was a member. But currently, we have 700 members. We would go to the general public, yes.
So ultimately, you plan on renting the home, which is fine.
That's correct.
But your preference would be to rent it to a member first. If there were no members that wanted to sign a long-term, year-to-year, or two- or three-year lease, then you would rent it to the next person?
Yes.
So you wouldn't be renting out this space or using this space for the purposes of the club?
No.
There wouldn't be functions there?
No, there would not be.
It'd be utilized as a single-family home?
Correct, as it was once used before.
So you're okay if that's strictly defined inside this?
So not to be used for the club functions? Yes, we would be.
Okay. Any other questions?
No. I'm just curious on the deck. How far does it project off the back of the dwelling?
Towards the pond?
Yes.
Eight feet.
So that eight feet would go into the 22-foot setback, correct?
Yes, but currently, it's, the Eagles Club is 13.2. The house is the 22 feet, so yes. So we would propose 10.8 feet from the rear setback. Excuse me, the rear property line.
Chris, you're referring to the deck on the dwelling? Because there's no deck on the dwelling to my, that I see here. I think the deck is only on the club itself.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Yes, there is no deck on the dwelling.
That's your asking.
Not that we would normally have the luxury of counsel on a hearing like this, but since you're here, I'd be interested to ask if you have any comments or concerns that we need to be...
No, they're intensifying, they're intensifying a non-conformity, which is the deck, from 22 feet to, say, what's that, 12 feet, I think? 10 feet, no, 10 feet. So they're going from 22 feet to 10 feet.
I believe it's only 18 feet. The house, the dwelling is currently 22. The club is closer to the rear setback.
Looks like 8, 1 plus 10 here, it's like 19 feet.
Okay, so 19 feet to 10 feet.
Correct. 10, 8.
So that's really the biggest concern that you would have. It is allowed, provided that, because it's a pre-existing non-conforming, non-conforming, you're just intensifying it, and the standard is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, so.
Okay. If we have no other comments, do we have anybody in the audience who has anything to add or wishes to comment on? What do you think, Jerry? Do you think you have a contingency clause in your motion?
I do, I mean, it's...
Which I think is a valid one.
Defined as it's a residence, it's not used for club purposes, right? And that it's made available to the public to rent. Not that it's...
See, I don't know if we can put the third one in there. We can restrict it to residency and not to be used for functions, but we're going to get ourselves in trouble to say who they can and can't rent to.
Okay.
Welcome to Massachusetts. You want to do it with the first two?
I'm comfortable.
I'm comfortable with the first two, yes, of course. So a motion to grant the special permit, correct? Grant the special permit with provisions that single-family home use only and not to be used for club purposes. Do we have a second? Jerry made the motion.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
Not at all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Kathy?
We have 14 days to do the paperwork. After that, I'll go to the town clerk, which will stay for a 20-day appeal period. There's no appeals. We'll give you a call, and then you have to record it.
Should we, will we receive a call or an email?
Yes.
Make sure you take care of the Board of Health, because nothing's going to happen.
Right.
The Board of Health and Conservation. Thank you.
Next agenda item, BUDS Goods and Services Mass Corporation hearings. So let me... Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48, as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, April 25th, 2024, 7:00 p.m. in the Lakeville Public Library, 4th Precinct Street, upon the petition of BUDS Goods and Services Mass Corporation. The applicant has requested to amend their special permit, 23-13, approved on August 3rd under Section 270-7.44 to expand its existing use to incorporate a processing room and workspace area. Property site is 475 Kenneth Welch Drive and is owned by Green Peak LLC. Assorted documents were available to view at the planning department. Okay, who is here representing the applicant?
Philip Soltman of Vicente LLP for the applicant. I'm here with Stella Johnson from the applicant.
Great. Tell us what we're doing, what we're looking at.
Yeah, I'm wondering if everybody has, if anybody has the materials. Why do I do this? A couple of pages, and if you could just pass them, there's only eight of them you need to share. But basically, the company operates, it's a 20,000-square-foot building, and it currently uses 6,747 square feet of it for marijuana product manufacturing. It's basically packaging of marijuana. And so what we're trying to do is expand that portion of the building that uses, you know, where the marijuana is handled, to an additional 2,600 feet or so, 9,322 square feet. And so you can see the first page is the existing conditions, the second page is what the additional square footage. There's some other space there that we're using, we're proposing to use for storage of just basically packaging materials, nothing marijuana-related. So that's sort of the first piece that we're asking for here is to be able to expand. And the reason for it is, we're not actually becoming larger, to be honest with you. It's just that as presently constituted, the space is very cramped, it's not easy to work, and a little extra space and then go a lot more efficient. So that's really the first piece of this. Now, there's a condition in the existing special permit that says that we need to seek approval from the zoning board if we're going to expand the use. I'm not exactly sure what that means. I kind of thought maybe it meant, you know, if you're going to do some additional type of use, but because it's also possible that it means, you know, expand your square footage, we thought we better come here, lay it out to you, and ask you for that authority.
I think the intent probably was, we want you to come back if you're going to do anything different or make anything bigger.
Yeah, okay.
So here you are.
Here we are. Now, along those lines, the other piece of this is, you know, we do see the possibility in the future of expanding further, and we're wondering if there's a way to sort of limit Condition 21 so that we don't have to come in every time we might do that, to the extent that we're not seeking to add some additional type of use to what we have here. So that's, those are kind of the two pieces of this.
Okay. Let me read a few things into the record, and then I think it's best if we tackle those one at a time, unless counsel thinks we should do them together. Probably should do them one at a time. Okay, we have a memo from the Planning Board, April 19th. At their Thursday, April 11th, 2024 meeting, Planning Board reviewed the above-referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. Planning Board voted to send a memo to the voting, to the zoning board advising. The Planning Board wants to note that they, that the parking should be evaluated, which is a fair point. We also have a letter from Conservation. There are no wetland issues at this site or this project. Actually, an email from Conservation. I believe, Kathy, unless I'm wrong, those are the only...
Select Board, Select Board.
Oh, yes. Select Board has nice fancy land that no one else does, that's why. I missed it. Okay. At their meeting on April 22nd, Select Board reviewed the special permit application for the property located at 475 Kenneth Welch Drive. In regards to the application, the Board had the following comment. The Board would ask that the Zoning Board of Appeals ensure that there is adequate parking on the site for the proposed expansion of the business. So we definitely got to talk about parking at this point. I'm going to ask council if she has any comments that she'd like to make or that we should be concerned about initially. Anything about the petition we should be concerned about, then I'm going to ask the Board to...
No, just, just the parking that was brought up, but also the change to Condition Number 21. I would not advise changing Condition Number 21 for this very purpose. So if they are going to expand, it would be, this board needs to determine, because it's a special permit use, this board needs to make sure that it's still in conformance with not more detrimental to the neighborhood. So that has to do with parking. So, you know, whenever there's an expansion, you want to know about it, unfortunately.
So back to Exhibit 1, which is talking about the current expansion and looking to do. Questions do we have, or concerns do we have?
I have a question. Are you adding more employees?
No, and just, this will sort of all lead into the other issues that we're talking about. We currently employ, there's 25 employees, but we operate two shifts. So there's never, you know, it's generally evenly distributed between the two shifts. You might at one point have 14 at one shift and 11 at the other, but it's, that's about the extent. And we've got 23 parking spaces, so we don't really, you know, have an issue at this point with parking at the facility.
Phil, I thought somewhere it said 30 employees.
Yes, there are septic sites, I believe.
Oh, okay. Yes, you are correct.
Did you have Paul?
No, I was just curious.
He is not hiring anybody, you're not adding employees, and if you have adequate parking, no, you probably will have adequate after you get the...
I think we would. We clearly have it now, we don't anticipate at this time, you know, adding more employees. We'll get to the other issue of if we want to expand.
That becomes an issue, but if you're not adding employees...
We're not.
It's a...
That's correct.
So you've referenced that at this time, you're not adding employees. Does that mean if you get busy, and I understand you're saying it's cramped now, you'd like to expand and have a little more elbow room, but if things get busy, you may say yes to doing more business?
It's conceivable in the future, and I guess, you know, you're sort of skirting around the other issue here, too. What I'm suggesting is, you know, to the extent that we're going to add... What I'm suggesting is, you know, to the extent that we're going to add, let's say we decided to expand beyond this now 9,000 roughly square feet. You know, do we need to come in every time we're going to do a 1,000-foot expansion? Could we condition that as, to say something along the lines of, provide it that we have no more than 18 employees per shift? Now, if we're going to exceed that, I get it, you know? Then you're getting close to that 23, you know, parking spaces that we have. But we're really so far below that right now that unless there's a significant expansion, if the board wants us to keep coming, then we can do it. I'm just sort of curious if there's a way to...
We'll tackle that one in a second.
Okay, yeah.
So other questions? It sounds like as long as you're not increasing the employee count, parking shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue because it's adding the parking now. Other questions from the board?
Would the expansion increase the retail use or the parking?
There's no retail here.
There's no retail. So what is, why is there, what's, oh, that's storage?
Yes.
I read it as a store, sorry.
Yeah, there's about 10,000.
I was wondering why you had two stores. Okay, got it, sorry. And then, Mr. Chairman, if I may, is there the purpose of the... So you had mentioned that there's essentially two purposes for the expansion? Is that, so there's a process room and a workspace area, right? That's what it says.
It's just expand, those already exist.
Okay. So you're making them bigger?
Yeah.
So you're not, you're not, nothing in these new areas are new?
Correct.
Good.
You're literally just looking for more elbow room.
That's it.
And a question about the septic size. Your septic is good for 30 employees per shift or 30 total? How does that work? Not that it really matters.
Don't have, don't have that information.
Anyone else have any...
Sounds like 30 at once.
At once, yeah. I'm assuming, yeah. Not that it really matters.
I don't know either, yeah.
Same building, it's not adding to the building, it's just a couple of road changes inside.
Any comments from anyone in the audience? Okay. Board here to make a motion regarding the...
So, Mr. Chairman, we would be issuing a new special permit along the same lines as the, as the existing special permit, but with the new dimensions. And so I'm wondering if...
Could I just, because this is an amendment to the special permit. Can we just amend that?
Well, we have, so there's, there's, the statute 48, Section 9, does not allow for an amendment or an extension of a special permit. So what we, we are going, it's going to be a modification or amendment, but it's for, we'll just list everything as it is now because then when they record it, they're recording, they're recording a complete document. It's no heavy lifting on either side, really. But I guess...
I think it makes it simpler. It's needed because everything's together.
Yeah, it makes it simple, yeah.
You're not piecing it together. You don't have a special permit and amendment over here, then an amendment down the road. It's always one big...
So I guess the question is then, having them come back. So if they didn't increase the number of, so if they didn't increase the number of employees and they don't, and they're not proposing a different use of the, of the new area, perhaps they wouldn't need to... But the problem is, is the special permit's going to cite the area.
I would probably safer approve this. I know you probably don't like having to come back, but...
But I think, I think you'd be better off from a title, from a title perspective because it's going to cite the area and then if you change that area, you're, you might have a title problem.
Okay.
Because it's going to be recorded.
Understood.
Sorry, I know it may be a little easier for the long term, but hopefully, as long as you're not doing an addition every three months, I think you'll be...
I thought I'd ask.
Always ask. If you don't ask, the answer's going to be no, right?
That's correct.
I knew that when I was in high school, like I tell everyone, I would have had a lot more dates. Okay. Special permit application? To, right, whatever. Confirming no additional employees?
No additional employees.
Okay, so special permit, you can't make, you can't second. So the motion on the table is to approve the special permit with no additional employees. To get the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. We have some minutes. Kathy has included.
See, I thought those were different. That's why you handed out new ones, but they're not. They're exactly the same.
We have had a chance to redo.
Yeah, I don't want to change the names.
Both of them not in the voting category.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for March...
March 21st meeting, motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Do we have any other business to come before the board? The only thing I am going to ask is if everyone, I'm, I'm, I'm going to send out an email and please just respond literally with dates. Because what we probably need to do in the best interest of folks coming before us for other petitions and whatnot is we need to have a one-off date for the Rocky Woods hearing. So what we're going to try to do is get a date that works for everybody, specific date during the course of each month. So whether it's the second Tuesday of each month or the first Monday of each month, and hold these hearings separately to bifurcate it from our regular hearings, only because I don't need folks coming to, or we don't need folks coming to put a debt on their house, having to sit through the long necessary process. So, so just remember, when I do, when we do send that email out, just respond with dates and then Kathy and I will coordinate. Hopefully, try to get that done within the next week.
So we do have one petition for next month?
Okay.
And I have to do the advertising tomorrow, so...
What time do you have to do the advertising by tomorrow?
Late morning.
Want to discuss a date right now?
Well, here's, here's what I'm thinking. This is going to go into the summer, so...
Oh, yeah, it's going to come in for sure.
I'm assuming, yeah, the book, my point is, I think people have vacations, people are going to be doing things, so unfortunately, I think if we just pick an arbitrary date right now...
What is it, a fixed date?
I don't think you want to make it a fixed date.
Well, part of the reason...
This is going to be moving.
Part of the reason we need to make it a fixed date is in order to secure the auditorium at the high school. They need to know that out ahead of time. It's not like openly available to us all the time, so...
My recommendation is then, for that purpose, you would just make our standard meeting that meeting.
That's what I'm thinking. And the extra meetings to hear the lab or police station.
And that would be a moving date. I don't think you want to play with the moving variable of a date.
The high, keep in mind that the school district is accommodating us, even though they're proud of us and they would prefer beginning of the week. We're going to have a meeting that happens every month for the next five or six months. Thursday nights aren't good.
Why?
I don't know, it's up, it's their call because they have functions going on in June. There could be graduation things happening. There could be tournaments happening. When you get back into September, there's volleyball, there's sporting events and whatnot. You know, it's easy for them to accommodate us at the beginning. It's simple, I think a lot of people make the assumption that we just call up and they just say, yeah, whatever you need type of a deal. This was a process to coordinate getting it for the 16th. I'm not saying they were difficult. They were very, they worked with us and they're willing to work with us, but we kind of need to work around them, especially if we're going to, you know, be up there all the time.
Could we propose the dates of the Thursdays for May? Since we already secured May, June, July, and August and to get an answer, a reply from the school about availability?
Yeah, we can propose that. We can propose those dates. Again, like I said, I don't think it's an issue going into the summer. The problem is going to be once we get to September and October and whatnot, but let's...
Let's at least get three or four on the books.
Yeah, let's, we'll send out an email. Get dates back and we'll coordinate as best, as best as we can at this juncture. So... I'll send it to Jeff.
So, not to belabor the point, right? But given the sensitivity of this petition, this applicant, right? I think having it on the same date that we meet regularly is better so we can have a full quorum. Because if you start moving the dates around, we both, we all have obligations. Some of us are traveling for work. Some of us may not be available. Unless we can meet and join the meeting remotely, if we're not in town, I just want to be, I think having a more fixed date for that meeting is a, is a better way to handle it.
Right, which is what we're trying to do. We're trying to get a fixed date that's not on a Thursday or a Friday or, not that we would ever have it on a Friday or Saturday, but again, I think it's easier to, for the school to accommodate us as opposed to saying, we're going to do Thursday for the next two, then we're going to do Tuesday for the next one and then Wednesday to kind of, you know, I, it is, it is not the most convenient thing for us as a board, but, you know, it's, we need to, we need to work within the parameters that we have. We just don't have a venue that's large enough that the town solely has control over. That's, that's really the issue.
If we're not in town, will we be able to remotely access the venue and participate?
I'm going to say, I'm going to, I'm going to confirm with Amy that we do have remote protocol.
We, you can do a hybrid meeting.
Yeah, we can do a hybrid meeting. As long as the quorum is in person.
Right, and provided that you make the Zoom available to everybody, not just the person here that's missing.
Yeah, right. All right, so we'll, we'll see if that's...
But I'm not sure if the auditorium can do that.
I mean, the planning board does it, so I'm sure.
But they do it at the police station, right?
Yeah, the police station's wired for that.
The police station's wired for it.
We'll, we'll make as many accommodations as we can to make it accessible for everybody and we can, we can take that offline to work that out with IT folks in Lake Cameron, whoever, so... So I just want to make everyone aware, we'll get that email. The sooner you can reply, the better off it'll be. And unfortunately, if we can't get it done by the time you need to post for tomorrow, then you just have to post for the auditorium. Whoever's applying will have to, they can always ask for containers if they don't want to be at a full, two-person event, so we'll do the best we can. All right. I don't think there's anything else to come before us, so... I'll make a motion, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.
Good for you for coming back.